Good evening and welcome Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2014-15. We begin each meeting with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would care to join.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as it is now.
First on our agenda tonight, we have approval of eight different sets of minutes, it looks like. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from September 16th, 2014?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? All in favor of the minutes from September 16th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from August 19th, 2014, Part Two. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? See none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from August 19th, 2014, Part Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Okay, next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from September 2nd, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from September 2nd, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from September 16th, 2014, Part One. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion on these? See none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from September 16th, 2014, Part One, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from September 16th, 2014, Part Two. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from September 16th, 2014, Part Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next, we have approval of the closed work session minutes from August 19th, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? See none, all in favor of approval of the closed work session minutes from August 19th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next, we have approval of the closed work session minutes from September 2nd, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval of the closed work session minutes from September 2nd, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. And last, approval of the closed work session minutes from September 16th, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? Okay, all in favor of approval of the closed work session minutes from September 16th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Okay, a little bit of housekeeping before we move forward. November 4th is our next scheduled, or actually, the first meeting in November, and that is Election Day. It's my recommendation that we move it to a 10:00 AM meeting instead of an evening meeting and keep the agenda light. How does council feel about that?
I have no problem with that. I think, you know, it's going to be a busy day for those either, you know, on the ballot and a lot of us off the ballot who volunteered to do other things that day.
Sure. Sheree, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. John, Stephen.
Whatever the majority wants.
Okay. Well, okay, great, thank you.
That'll be 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM, yes, on November 4th.
Will that be posted on the website and make mention of it at our...
At our next October meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're funny.
Be sure to pack 14 lines out of it.
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a training grant award presentation by Dick First from LGIT to Wayne Strausberg, the Director of Administration.
Hi, actually, I'm Tim Amos, Executive Director of LGIT. Thank you for having me here tonight. On behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Local Government Insurance Trust, I want to first of all thank Wycomico County for belonging to the trust. We appreciate your support and just wanted to mention a couple of things before I present this training grant to Mr. Strausberg and Mr. Inkroad is that because of the good management and governance of LGIT over the last several years, we, LGIT, have been able to accumulate some members' equity. And one of the ways that we keep, one of the ways we're trying to return this in a responsible manner back to the membership of training grants such as this, and in fact, in this current year's budget, our Board of Trustees voted to set aside $125,000 in training grants, a police, some of that specifically for police training, if you decide your sheriff's department wants to take advantage of that, body cameras, we have a matching grant program for that in addition to that, so those are some of the programs. And in fact, just in this current year, I know Wycomico's, this is the second year that Wycomico's belonged to the program, and so far, you all are already getting back $16,000 in credits for your participation in our program because of your good work. And I do want to mention that you're winning the, you won the Risk Management Award for last year that's going to be presented at the Naval Academy Stadium on October 30th, and hope you all can attend. Lunch is there, it's no charge, plenty of parking, which is why we do it at the stadium now. We had a different place a few years ago and it was problematic, so we have it there, but hope, if you can, please try to attend. It's a half-day program and the featured speaker is with the State Police Training Program over in Sykesville and he's talking about what happens if you have an emergency such as what happened in Columbia Mall occurring in your locality and how to deal with that. So we think it's a very timely program. So now, I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to present a check for $1,550 to Mr. Strausberg and also Mr. Inkroad for training, for occupational safety and health training, which is, which benefits the trust because it makes you all have a safer community for your employees. If you have a safer community for employees, it makes your employees have a good, have good attitudes and it betters your citizenship all the way around. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Inkroad and talk a little bit about how, how he feels it benefited the county as well, if that's okay with you, sir.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks for joining. It's been a great opportunity we've, we've had been able to put in for certain grants. This is the second one that I've submitted and the second one we've received. It's an opportunity for us sometimes when we have a little bit of hardships when it comes to training money, but I was able to go to Ocean City for a week and the particular course that I took is actually going to benefit us because I'm able to come back and I'm able to also provide this to our supervisors and our department heads on some of the things that we can do because we need to reduce our claims since we really don't make a product. One of the best ways to reduce our amount of money we're paying is to reduce our claims. And there are a number, there was 19 different subjects that were covered in it, and it's also a primary part of where I'm headed for the county as the risk manager is to get my advanced certificate in safety, which will also benefit, hopefully provide us with discounts as well as the information, because this information comes back in training. We turn around, we're getting ready to put on some online training for our employees as well as classroom. So this is just an opportunity to keep my skills up to date and make things better for the county.
Great, thank you.
If I could just say, we're extremely pleased with our relationship with, with LGIT at this point in time. They've been an excellent partner. I'd like to, to recognize Dave's effort. Dave has done a tremendous job in terms of raising the awareness amongst county employees regarding safety with providing some very effective training for us and, and the results are showing, as you see, we've won this, this risk, this risk management award. We've gotten this grant. This is primarily due to David's efforts, so he's been, he's been doing an extremely good job for us and we should all be grateful to him for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Andy gets the check.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for putting me at the head of your team. Thank you.
I sat in the meeting last night for about two hours.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have to adjourn out of our legislative session and recon, or convene as the Urban Service Commission. Can I have a motion to adjourn as Wycomico County Council convene as the Urban Service Commission?
Shall move.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now, we have Resolution 03-2014. Mr. Kramer, do you want to...
I'd be glad to, Mr. President. This is, as you know, a bookkeeping act to have funding available for the Morris Mill Urban Services Project. The grants and loans that we have been able to receive or have approved, they are reimbursements. They, we, we get paid for them as we expect the money, so we have to have a balance of funding available to, to aid the cash flow during the construction period. So Resolution Number 3-2014 makes a supplemental appropriation from the Wycomico County Urban Services Commission fund balance to the Morris Mill Urban Services District Water Project in the amount of $1 million. And when you go back into your legislative session, the county council will take that similar appropriate action.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 03-2014?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this or questions? Okay. All in favor of Resolution 03-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to adjourn as the Urban Service Commission and reconvene as the county council?
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, Resolution Number 137, 2014, at the request of the county executive, authorizes a loan from the general fund to the Wycomico County Urban Services Commission in the amount of $1 million and approving a promissory note between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the Wycomico County Urban Services Commission.
Okay, can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 137-2014?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, just a quick thing, if you don't mind. The resolution we just did prior to this listed that the monies was coming from the fund balance, and I believe these monies are also coming from our fund balance, not just from the general fund. So I, I think, Mr. Baker, shouldn't the word "fund balance" be inserted into this after "general fund" and the same thing in several other places?
I refer to Mr. Mackel in that.
It is "fund balance."
It is "fund balance," is that what you said?
Yes.
To just insert "fund balance" after "general fund"?
Well, it says, at the top, it says "from the general fund." Don't you think we should put "fund balance" into that so it's specific as to exactly where it's coming from?
That'd be fine.
And then down on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whereas, again, it says we're taking $1 million from the general fund. Should we put "fund balance" in that so it's specific as to where it's coming from?
Yes, ma'am.
And then on the second page where it says "from general fund," should it also say "fund balance" probably?
Uh, yes.
So it's all consistent. Now, the only thing, then we have Exhibit A, and again, should we repeat the, the same thing in that on the 1, 2, 3, whereas down, the last line, for the Wycomico County General Fund, should that also say "fund balance"?
Yes, ma'am.
To make it specific. And then I have a question, why are we having to pay interest on this loan?
It's the county paying itself, isn't it?
Yeah, why are we paying interest on? Sorry.
Yes, please. Please introduce yourself as well.
Andy Mackel, Director of Finance. The Urban Service Commission is an enterprise fund and the general fund is a governmental fund, so it seems appropriate that, to borrow money from the taxpayers to support a enterprise fund operation, that an interest charge would be, would be appropriate, certainly up to you, but we put it in as a, same interest rate as the USDA is charging the county.
Well, I guess, you know, if we're supposed to have it in there, I was just questioning as to why we were paying interest, whether we leave it in or not, I guess it's up to the council, right?
Does anybody have any?
I, I would support leaving it in there because as Mr. Mackel stated, the urban service, the monies made up there are from the taxpayers for services.
For services.
Right, and that's where we're borrowing. It should be paid back with interest, I feel.
Anyone else have any...
Isn't that what the urban services are for, to pay for this?
I beg your pardon?
Isn't that what we're using the money for, for urban services?
The money is being used to install the Morris Mill Water Project and that will be repaid by the users of the Morris Mill area. So it's a B for service. So we're charging the residents' interest, in other words, on the... Residents will be paying interest on the USDA loans and the urban service, yes, indirectly. You're correct.
So it's just benefiting that particular area and not subjecting all the taxpayers to that specific cost?
Correct, we are. We're taking the money out of the general fund investment pool and putting it into this project, so...
Thank you for the explanation.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm leaving it in there.
Okay. Okay.
If we could have either a formal amendment or amendment by consensus for the general fund?
Yeah, could we have a formal amendment? Would you like to propose?
Sure, I would like to...
You'd have to go through the whole thing again.
Have the resolution amended to add the word "fund balance" in the appropriate locations.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution 137-2014 as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Thank you, Gail.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 138, 2014, at the request of the executive to award the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wycomico County Regional Airport Cleaning Services bid award to quality staffing services and...
Yes, Mr. Bryant's here.
Actually, I was looking for Mr. Conrady.
Mr. Conrady.
I couldn't see Rick sitting in the corner.
All right, can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 138-2014?
And it would be appropriate for both gentlemen to come forward.
Shall move.
Second.
Okay.
The, the short explanation of this while they're coming forth is that the recommendation is to award the cleaning contract to other than the low bidder, and the gentleman will explain the reason for that recommendation, and when a bid is not awarded to the low bidder, it must be approved by the county council.
Welcome. Any of you would introduce yourselves for the viewing audience?
Sure, my name is Robert Bryant, Airport Manager.
Rick Conrad, Purchasing Agent.
Great. Do you want to kind of walk us through?
Sure, I, this is kind of deja vu a little bit with the cleaning services because the company that we're disallowing is the company that we had difficulties with, with the contract in 2012 for the government office building, the public safety building, and the courts building. And we came to council that following year and asked you to award to other than the low bidder then because of the difficulties that we had with this council, not the council, with the cleaning company. And council agreed with our assessments and it's the same situation, the bids are much closer this time. The difference in the, the base bid is about $586 for the entire year of services. When you add the overtime, which the, the number two company on the, on the bid tabulation has a lower overtime rate, that, and there was about 36 hours of overtime last year, based on that, then the, the amount is less than $200 difference for the entire year. If you have more overtime this year, that could actually be, that could actually be the low bidder, you know, theoretically.
Sure.
So that's kind of where we're at, and I think you were provided with some memos that, and some things, hopefully with, relative to some of the issues we had with the other company, going back to that previous memo that we provided council. And, and we recommend, we did check out the number two bidder, they're a new one for us, they're not someone that we've dealt with before, but they did have some, some good recommendations, according to Terry Jones, that, that checked out very well and that they did, they did good jobs in other areas and other places with similar scopes of work, so we feel comfortable that we can bring them in and hopefully they'll do, do a great job for us.
Okay. Are there any council questions?
Why would it be overtime if somebody's bidding on a project? What would cause the overtime to come in?
The way the schedule works for the cleaning contractor is they operate seven days a week. First shift is 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, then they come back and work from 9:00 PM until 1:00 AM. The 1:00 AM requirement is to ensure that, that, that the, that the cleaning contractor is capable of being able to secure the building following the last scheduled arrival of Piedmont Airlines and to also ensure that all deplaning passengers have been picked up or have left the terminal building. The previous contract required the cleaning contractor to work that second shift from 8:00 PM until midnight, where the last scheduled arrival is 11:45. If that flight's running late, that caused more overtime than what this new schedule would require. So it's just easier to switch that second shift from 8:00 to midnight and to change it from 9:00 until 1:00 AM.
Possibly we won't need overtime, Mr. Conrady.
Yeah, we'll still, we'll still see the occasional overtime, but not as much as we've had previously.
They're, they're also using it for snow removal, sidewalks and so forth. When, in those, you know, when you're in that incident, it's hard to get a contractor over there in time to get it cleared when you have a flight coming in, so, so these, these vendors are set up to do that.
That would make sense if you got snow removal from the same company.
Yeah.
Okay, just a question.
Any other questions?
Just, I was going to say, when will this go into effect if we approve this tonight? When will they start?
I think it was going to be pushed to November 1st, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We've extended the existing contract an extra month to, to cover us until the new contract would go into effect.
And you have the money in your budget for this?
Yes.
Or will, just things accordingly to pay for this?
Yes, we've got the, we've got the full amount plus a contingency and the amount that there is overtime already identified in the budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the Airport Commission has already signed off on this as well.
Correct.
Joe?
I sit on the Airport Commission and we've edited pretty carefully and spent a lot of time on it and we're pretty comfortable that this is going to be the best way for the airport cleaning service to go right now.
Sure. Any other comments? Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution 138-2014, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item for your council consideration is Resolution Number 139, 2014, at the request of the executive, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 139-2014?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Inkroad is here to answer any questions and...
Great.
Dave Inkroad, Emergency Management Agency.
Go ahead.
All right, there were some questions as far as the hazard mitigation grant. I could basically, and I have some handouts here if they're, I will really self-explain them rather quickly. I think I have enough. But the grant itself is something that can be applied for by either county governments and/or by the residents, and in this particular case, Mr. Hucky has applied for a grant to raise his house because of the flood-plained area that he lives in. He is actually our first grant from a residence. We've actually used this grant a number of times as a county, like out on Green Hill Church Road. We've elevated the road out there. We've also done some retrofitting, which was done at the detention center because of our air conditioning units where EOC is housed. So this is something that we'll probably see a lot more in the future. I think the biggest, probably the biggest hurdle for most people is that they have to come up with 25% of the grant if FEMA does in fact approve their request. So right now, like I said, this is our first one and no one else has applied yet, but if you look around the state, this is not uncommon. You'll find it, all county does, probably so many a month. And Worcester County's been looking at some, so again, it's something that we're probably going to see as long as the money holds out, so...
How long has this fund been available to private citizens?
This one came out shortly, right after declaration. Declaration has to be signed in, and basically what happens is, is a certain amount of money is, is basically put aside for this, and there's a form that they use, how each state gets the money based on that, which it kind of tells you in this one gray area. But at the same time, it's been, this one has been around since about 2012.
Okay.
And it was off the ratio, and then the Sandy money came available after that, so they're actually working off of that until, I hate to say it, but until another event occurs where money would be, you know, obligated for that, that there would be funds available. So I'm not really sure how much is still left on this particular grant.
Okay.
You're, you're saying that it's going to cost $119,000 to raise his house?
That is, yes, that's, and that's by his contractors. That's pretty much standard cost. He'll pay 25% of that, FEMA will pay the other 75%.
$120,000 to raise it?
Yes, you have to, they actually have to lift the house up. He'll be out of the house for about three months. Takes about that much time because you have to undo the electric, the plumbing, you have to put a new foundation in, and it has to be certain standards and then obviously they have to, once they elevate and put back down, then they've got to reinstall and so forth. So there's some other work that needs to be done underneath his home as well, if he needs that standard.
I'm quite familiar with raising houses. I mean, down in White Haven, we raise them all the time, but I have never seen one that costs $120,000. Now, are we remodeling the house too, or?
No, it's just the elevation grant.
This is not costing the county.
The only thing that's costing the county is my time, which is doing work time. I'm required to ensure that he's staying within the guidelines of the grant and I would, you know, just know that basically they, you know, that he's accomplished whatever and the fund will be released from there, so other than that, they know it doesn't cost the county a penny.
The estimated project cost, it says it's $110,000.
It's $119,528. Mr. Hucky has to come up with $29,882.25, and FEMA is going to, will be sending in
Am I reading that wrong at the bottom?
And that could have been from when, when the first one, I don't know how this one was...
Because it does say it's $110,000.
Yeah, yeah. But this is, this has been revised.
So we don't have the right one then?
This, this says 119.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, and on the...
What I have says 119, that's all right.
Mine says 119.
119?
Yeah, I have a 100.
Look at the page before it, at the bottom.
Project cost.
Do you see it?
Total estimated project cost.
C says project cost.
Oh, yeah.
D is a... Total estimated project cost, 110.
And that's wrong.
That's wrong?
Yes, it should be 119. Yes, it should be $119,528.
I don't know how you got the wrong.
I don't, I mean, I'm the one that puts the book together.
Mr. Carver, we went down and looked at this house. It needs to be raised.
Well, I'm not, the whole west side needs to be raised.
It's sitting at water level, it's...
I'd just be curious later on if you tell me if it's a bid, because I know there's been one, there's one bid raised in White Haven right now, in New Foundations and everything. I didn't see that.
Was this put out on bids? No, because it's the homeowner that does it. If we, we have no involvement with the contractors, then we'd have to worry about it. Mr. Baker can advise me, but we'd have to worry about liability then.
So, so FEMA doesn't demand that it's bid.
Yeah.
So, he can say it costs a half a million dollars to raise his house if he wanted to?
He's gotta, he has to show, no, it's gonna have to be within cost effectiveness. If it doesn't meet their cost effectiveness guidelines, they're gonna deny it. So, they kind of know what it's gonna cost to raise it and so forth. And if he goes beyond that, if he can't justify it, they're not gonna approve it.
And didn't he have to get all, he had to get local bids and submit them to FEMA? So, all these are local bids?
Yeah, and, and again, those were his bids that he did. The only thing we're doing is overseeing it. We're not...
I guess that's what I asked. It would have to be bid. And you said no.
Well, not through the county, no.
Not through the county, but he had to get bid.
But he did search around them, yeah. Now, I don't know who all he went, you know, checked with, that's, that's the homeowner.
So, are you saying this has not been approved yet? It has, needs our approval?
No, it's been, FEMA has approved the funds for him. All we're waiting for is to go ahead with from us.
From us?
Yes.
Okay. Does the homeowner have the flood insurance policies?
Yes.
Is Mr. Huck here? Is Mr. Huck here?
Excuse me?
Is the property owner here?
Not in my knowledge.
Okay.
The other thing, and I noticed in here, in the application, that this is not his primary residence. It's a secondary residence.
That's correct.
And that's allowed under FEMA?
Yes, it is. That's one of the very first questions I had.
So, what has the county got to do with all this? If we don't have any obligation to it, we have no response. Is this using up...
The FEMA regulations allow a county government or municipal government or an Indian Nation or certain other entities to be applicants for these funds. And a private individual cannot apply directly to FEMA for the, for the funding. But the private individual can ask the Emergency Management Agency in the jurisdiction, in this case, our county, to actually be the applicant on behalf of the homeowner.
So, we're acting as a conduit?
Yes.
The only concern I have at this point is, you know, I would like to know what happened with, between the 110 and 119,000? Why, why there are two different figures there?
Well, when we first worked it up, we didn't have all of his contractor stuff in, so I was adding stuff, but I don't know how that came out.
That's 119.
Yeah, the one I submitted the very end was 119, but it's, that's what it's...
And I think, I think it's important to point out also that the alternate project on this, the alternative, if this was not done like this and we went with something, he went with something else, the total estimated cost would have been $384,000.
To move the house to another location.
Yes.
That's a rough estimate.
With this particular program, is a jurisdiction allowed so many, like as far as there are maximum number? Because not only are private individuals allowed to go through this program, but so are nonprofits and other entities as well. I was just curious about that.
I think that, Ed, you may be at a point, if I'm wrong, right on this report, but there's a percentage that's given to us based on the actual award. So, if it's like $2 million, I think that the first 15% is awarded is... And again, it's a very, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I can't speak on it as much as I'd like to in that area. But there, there is a certain amount that, yes, you can apply for basically. But it's gonna dictate how much money has been awarded because you may only be able to do 10 or 12. Next time, you may be able to do 100 hours. It all depends on how much money is rewarded under the declaration.
I think that's right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution 139-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And the president votes aye. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item for council consideration is Resolution Number 140-2014 at the request of the executive to amend the fiscal years 2015 to 2019 capital improvements program and capital budget to include the Morris Mill Urban Services District Water Project.
Hey Matt, did we want to do the...
Yeah, that's not, that's for public hearing. You're on the wind, number four.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Thank you, Melissa. At this point in the agenda is a presentation by Dr. Dan Irvin and Ryan Taylor, who will make a presentation to the county council with regard to wind power.
Great, thank you.
This was by their request to come before the county council.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come. Ryan, I really appreciate this opportunity. I want to talk about industrial wind and its application here on the shore. This, this technology faces some challenges and that's, that's what I want to talk about. I am a finance professor at Salisbury University. I have 20 years of experience in electricity as an engineer at a major southeastern utility company and as a financial analyst at another utility company. And I have spent, oh, probably eight years researching various topics within the wind, within the electricity industry. This presentation is strictly onshore wind energy. I always start my talks with this slide. And, and so I'm going to go through some basic stuff that I think's important that, that we understand and, and I'll hurry through this. You can see that energy is at the intersection of these three national concerns, security, environment and the economy. You can't talk about one of those without it having an effect on energy. We need to think about energy in two categories, transportation fuels and electricity. In 2013, less than 1%, actually it's .622% of electricity was generated with petroleum liquids and petroleum coke. So, petroleum is not important to electricity. And every time I give a talk, and I've given many talks like this, these are the guiding principles. Anytime I think about electricity, these are the guiding principles that I, I use. I want it to be safe, I want it to be reliable, and I want it to be economical. So, this next part, we're going to look at the wind resources in the U.S. This is a map from NREL, which is the National Renewable Energy Lab. And you can see that most of the wind resources are in the Midwest. That's where most of the wind farms are. We have a little bit on the west coast and there's a few pockets on the east coast where there's some, there's some resources. Here is a map from the same organization of Maryland. You can see that in the western part, there's more wind than in the eastern part. Here on the shore, there's a little bit around the shoreline, whether it's the bay or whether it's the ocean. Now, this was measured at 80 meters, so that gives you an idea of where the, where they were measuring the wind. This slide shows you the companies, I'm sorry, the states that have the most wind. Texas by far has the most capacity. And this was measured or reported in, at the end of 2013. So, Texas has the most capacity. And the table on the right gives you the capacity factor. Now, capacity factor is a measure of how often, well, it's this. They take the name plate. Each machine has a name plate. So, let's say it's 1 megawatt. And you multiply that name plate by the number of hours in a year. And that's 8,760. So, that's the theoretical maximum that it could produce. You divide the amount that it actually produces by the theoretical maximum, that gives you the capacity factor. And you can see that, I believe, Iowa, no, Kansas is the highest with a little over 40%. These are some of the challenges that wind faces. Intermittency, scale, because these machines are small relative to what I call thermal machines like coal and nuclear and natural gas. The, the economics are challenging and we have, we need to talk about electricity quality. Electricity has a quality component to it and, and I'll talk about that here. And public acceptance. There's, some of the folks in Somerset County are pretty upset about what's going on down there. Some are not, so, but there is, there is that issue. Here is a measure of intermittency. This data came from the Bonneville Power Administration. Of course, that is in the northwest. And I'm not saying that anything on the eastern shore would look like this, but I think it would. This is the change in output every five minutes. So, it measures every five minutes the change. And the maximum change, maximum negative change is 213 megawatts. Now, to put that in perspective, the machine up at Vienna, that plant, is 162 megawatts. So, 213 megawatts coming offline, it's like one and a half Vienna plants dropping offline in five minutes. And you don't have a lot of, you don't have a lot of warning. You don't, there's, there's not a lot of forecasting. You can look at this and you can see that that's not exactly a, a time series that you can forecast. In addition, the largest positive change was three, was 363 megawatts. So, that's like adding to Vienna's within five minutes. And with an electrical system, it's gotta be balanced every second. Every, you know, it goes through 60 cycles a second. So, it's balanced at all times. That means that the supply and the demand have to be equal. So, with these machines coming on and coming off this quickly, it, it challenges the, the operation of the system. These are projected prices from the Department of Energy. They have a model and this is for 2019. So, they forecasted ahead, this is about the time it would take for some of these things to be built and come online. You can see that they've just, they have put it into two categories, dispatchable and non-dispatchable. They have coal and natural gas. You can see that. The non-dispatchable, you can see that land-based wind, it looks like it may be the same price as, as coal. Offshore is very expensive and, and solar is, solar PV is really expensive way to generate electricity. We have these hidden costs with wind electricity. We have the cost of keeping power plants available, loss of fuel efficiency, transmission cost, and this loss of transmission flexibility. And I'll talk a little bit about these here. This is a report and you can see that we've added in these hidden costs. I've got two categories. If we're adding wind to a system that has natural gas, it's a little bit cheaper than if we're adding wind to this, to a system that's got coal. On the eastern shore, it's coal. We have one major generating facility on the shore and that's at Indian River. It's unit four and it's, I forget, it's about 450 megawatts. It's in that range. So, you can see that these, these additional costs really run up the price of electricity. If we look at what has happened in the past, I do have a typo here and I'll get to that. I looked at the states that have more than 5% of wind power or they use wind to generate more than 5% of their electricity in 2013. This is the last year that it's available. There was an average price increase from 2012 to 2013 of 13.97%. It should read 33 states in DC generated less than 5% using wind power and their average pricing change was 2.11%. So, there's quite a bit of difference. Now, let me also give you this caveat. This is a complex topic and I have, for, for the sake of brevity, I condensed it down to this. We, I could spend, we could talk for a day just on this particular topic. One reason that people talk about wind is the ability to add jobs. And there will be some jobs added in the construction phase, but this is a graph that comes from U.S. Congressional Court Research Service. And it looks at the manufacturing jobs. If you look to the right of the vertical line, this is the forecast. And you can see that the existing capacity of the manufacturing industry for this is greater than the demand all the way across. So, I think it's a bit naive to believe that we may be generating manufacturing jobs for the wind energy here in, in Maryland. Most of that is already in the works. People will, proponents will talk about impact on CO2. Again, this is a complex topic. This is just one example. In California, and again, this is the latest data, the source for this is Department of Energy and the EPA. Between 2011 and 2012, wind generated, wind generation increased by 25.83%. Coal generation decreased by 30.63%. Yet emissions went up, CO2 emissions went up by 31.76%. Now, you may be thinking, that sounds kind of what's going on here. There is a deeper topic here or deeper matter. There's a nuclear plant called San Onofre or Songz, if you hear someone talk about Songz. That particular unit has come offline and there was a, I have a graph. If we have time later on, I'll show you that the decrease in that generation almost matches exactly the increase in CO2 emissions. So, you may be thinking to yourself, why is wind growing? And this is why, in my view. The, the subsidies, now, these are just the federal subsidies. And I've normalized it to kilowatt, by kilowatt hours. So, you can see what wind gets per KWH. I think this is a proper way to look at it. This is from a 2010 report and it uses 2010 generation data and it is in 2010 dollars. That is the latest report that's available from DOE. I have contacted them, but I've not, I'm hoping that they're redoing that, updating that report, but I've not heard back from them. I have added this in. I, I wanted to do this because I, I know as, as political leaders of the county, you, you hear a lot of people talk. And you look at this graph and you can see that, well, now wind doesn't look so bad as far as subsidies go because solar has just dominated it. So, you just need to be careful when you look at graphs, when people come in and talk about things and, and the graphs can, I don't want to say they can distort, but you just have to pay attention to what the scales are. So, this gives you a little bit idea of what the subsidies looks like for the different technologies. I think it might be better to have questions after Ryan's done his, if, if that's okay, or I can take questions now, it's up, it's whatever y'all want to do.
You can do it all at the same time?
Okay. Okay, Ryan? Just, I think you can just pull mine out.
I didn't. No.
And again, thank you for having me as well. So I'm Dr. Ryan Taylor, professor of biology at Salisbury University, and I hold a PhD in bioacoustics since the past fifteen years, studying how the brain interprets sound. And so that's kind of what I do, both here in Maryland and at the Smithsonian Tropical Research Institute in Panama. So, I think it's kind of important to think about, as I was telling Mr. Kramer, that, so as we look forward to alternatives to, to electricity generation, we need to be thinking very carefully about moving away from fossil fuels. So I'm certainly an advocate of that. I think we need to be thinking very carefully about how we develop new and renewable technologies for electric generation, but I think there are some serious downsides when we think about wind energy. And so I'm a resident of Somerset County, so I've been certainly involved with the discussions over the Somerset County Wind Project, and spent a lot of time looking at the data. And it's become clear to me that, that these wind projects are not necessarily a win-win, and I'll talk a little bit about why I think that's the case. Okay, so as I said, I think developing renewable energy projects and moving away from fossil fuels is, is critical, but we need to think very carefully about how we cite these projects. So one of the things I'm interested in as a biologist, when we think about wind turbine productions, are wildlife kills and noise production. So this is a typical wind turbine, so you can see this wind turbine is sited about twelve hundred feet from this home, and it absolutely dominates the skyline. So, you know, one of the things that the wind developers talk about when putting these wind turbines in residential communities is that, well, they're, they're windmills, they're windmills, well, yeah, they are, but they're actually massive, industrial-sized windmills that kill a lot of wildlife and generate a lot of noise. The first thing I'll tell you about, lots of folks who aren't biologists probably aren't terribly excited about bats, I think they're pretty neat, but at any rate, so a recent study in the journal Science, which is the most prestigious peer-reviewed journal in all of science, recently showed that bats provide three point seven billion dollars annually in crop services to farmers, and this is through pest management. So for example, one of the, the pest crops we have here on the eastern shore, the corn earworm, bats do a fantastic job every evening of knocking down these pests. So in Somerset County alone, based on these data, it suggests that bats provide two point three million dollars annually to our farmers in pest management services. What we also know is that bat populations are declining rapidly throughout the U.S., and wind turbine facilities are killing huge numbers of bats. So as we see continued decline of bat populations, I think it's very clear that what that's going to do is actually shift the economic burden more so onto our farmers than they already have. So when the wind developers come in and they talk about, well, it's, it's a win-win for the county, it's going to provide tax revenues, what they're not considering are these sorts of factors, sort of these ancillary factors, such as shifting the pest management burden further onto our farmers. The other big issue with wind turbines is they generate noise. They generate a lot of noise. So despite what many of the, the wind developers will tell you, they really do. And there's a lot of confusion generated over measuring noise. So what, what one of the two most commonly measured noise, or ways to measure noise, are in decibels, and you'll see what's called an A-weighting or a C-weighting. And so often, if you see a, a decibel count, which is a loudness count, right? So you'll see it written as DBA or DBC typically, and DBA is certainly the most common way to, to measure sound. The best way to do it for wind turbines is an unweighted measure, it's almost never done, but I'll, I'll show you a little bit about what these values mean. Okay, so when we think about frequency, that's what your ear hears as pitch, right? So sound travels out through the atmosphere in, literally in pressure waves, and the longer those waves are apart, the lower that your ear detects those in pitch. So long wavelengths, your ear detects as low pitch or bass sounds, and of course, all the way up to the very high-frequency waves, that your ear detects, detects as very high-pitched sounds. So when we talk about frequency, this is what your ear detects as, as pitch. Okay, so one of the interesting things is that the wind developers often say, you know, our wind turbines are quiet. They're as quiet as the refrigerator in your home, and what they'll tell you is that a thousand feet from your home, which are the setbacks that the wind developers often like, is that the wind turbines generate forty decibels of sound, and that's a DBA weighting. So what I'll show you is here, is I actually measured the refrigerator sound in my home, and I compared that to a wind turbine. So, let's see, does this have a laser pointer on it?
The green button.
The green button, ah, okay. So the top graph is sound energy from a wind turbine, the bottom is my refrigerator. So if you look on the bottom down here, this is frequency. So everything below one kilohertz tends to become, starting to get into these lower-frequency sounds, and especially when you get down here below about two hundred hertz, this is sort of getting into what we experience as really low bass sounds and rumbles, right? So what happens is, if you measure a wind turbine with a DBA weighting, right? So that weighting essentially captures everything under the dotted lines. If you take your sound meter and you measure the sound coming out of a wind turbine with an A-weighted filter, then it captures everything under this line. And so the analysis in my lab shows that that actually only captures fifty-two percent of the energy emitted from a typical wind turbine. My refrigerator, on the other hand, when I measure it with a DBA weighting, it captures ninety-two percent of the energy. So you can see most of that actually falls under the, the weighting curve there. So the point is, if someone says a wind turbine is no noisier than your refrigerator, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, it's a really different comparison. And so in effect, what happens is, when you have all of this energy down here that's unmeasured, the developers get a nice low number, and they say, look, it's quiet. And the reality is, you're, got a lot of energy that's, that's generated, that's just not being measured. And so it's, it's a really convenient way to get a light, nice low number, but it's not really accurately telling us how much sound is there. To give you another example, the sound power rating from a typical wind turbine is about a hundred and seven decibels, if you want to measure it on the A-weighted scale. A fully loaded eighteen-wheeler traveling at seventy-five miles an hour generates a sound pressure level of about ninety-six decibels. These are incredibly noisy machines. Just to give you some more information, so if you look, these are data actually measured inside a home from an acoustics company, and so what you see on this top line here, so inside a home, they're measuring the sound levels from a turbine at thirty-three to thirty-eight, depending on whether the windows are open or closed. Okay, so again, that sounds really quiet. So across your kitchen, a refrigerator's about thirty-eight to forty decibels, so it sounds really quiet. If you look down here, if you just flip your meter over to a C-weighting, we're over twenty decibels higher in sound, right? So the reality is, there's a lot more energy there that you're not measuring when you just present someone with an A-weighted rating. And I'll put it in, in a little bit further perspective for you. Okay, so keep this in mind, so at a thousand feet from a home, which is where the developers like to site turbines, they're generating thirty to forty decibels of energy. So sorry, this is a little bit small. These are, are sound levels inside my home of about twenty-three to twenty-five decibels on an A-weighted. So what that says is that a thousand feet from a home, a wind turbine is generating over ten decibels more energy. That's more than twice as loud as the background noise. Here's another way to put it. My neighbor mowing his yard next door is generating in the range of thirty-five decibels sound level inside my home. So essentially citing these turbines a thousand feet from homes is generating, is, is subjecting the residents to noise levels that are equivalent to your neighbor mowing his lawn all night, every night, next door. So these wind turbines are noisy, they, they really are. To put it another way, these are the same data from, from this acoustic company, by the way, this is the acoustic company that was hired by Pinear Green, who's working on developing the Somerset County project. And what you can see here is that, so this blue line, and so on, on the bottom here, we're looking at frequencies, these are the really low, deep-frequency rumbles. So the blue line is the amount of, of energy produced by the wind turbine, and the red line here is the, are basically U.S. standards for levels at which the sound levels should not exceed in order to avoid vibrations in residents' homes. What you can see is they're converging there. So these wind, wind turbines are generating really low-frequency sounds, these are the sounds that rattle your home. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions. But thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I was okay up to the wind turbines, the rest of it's okay.
Thanks, gentlemen. Yep.
I found it quite interesting about the bats, though. But I was just wondering, being, there's so many bats that are being killed, and I know you're talking about the economic benefit, but I'm just asking a question. Was there a device ever made to repulse the bats, or, you know, so the bats won't get into the, but I think there was, I mean, I've heard it, is that correct?
No, that's a great question. What they're finding is that for some reason, bats actually are attracted to these turbines. And we don't know why, that's actually still a subject of research. What they're finding is the taller the turbines are, the more bats that they're killing, because bats are migratory. So as these turbines become taller and taller, they're reaching into the airspace that the bats are traveling through, and for the non-migrating bats, they actually seem to be attracted to the wind turbines, and we're not actually sure why. Amazingly, the bats don't have to collide with the blades to be killed. So the blades generate a low-pressure airspace behind them, the bats collide through, it literally collapses their lungs and kills them. And so, but why they're being attracted to them, we'll find out, still trying to figure that out.
Okay, because I was thinking there was some type of device to, you know, not attract them to the blades anymore, being it was such a huge issue, that was why. Interesting. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we are past six-thirty. So we're good for our public hearings now.
Absolutely. The first item for council's consideration is a public hearing on Resolution one forty dash twenty-fourteen, to amend the fiscal year's twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen capital improvements program and capital budget to include the Morris Mill Urban Service District border project. This is the last item on Morris Mill to comply with all the documentation required, and this will add it to our capital improvements project.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution one forty dash two thousand and fourteen?
Show motion.
Second.
And this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments about this specific resolution? Okay, council comments? Okay. All in favor of Resolution one forty dash two thousand and fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And the president votes aye.
Good, thank you. The next item for consideration is a public hearing on Resolution number one forty-one dash twenty-fourteen. Notice was given in compliance with Chapter twenty-two of the Wycombe County Code and Local Government Article, Section ten dash three twelve, that the council would hear public comments on proposed resolutions to enter into license agreements with Solar City Corporation on two parcels of land. The first parcel is on the southwest side of Owens Branch, located on the southwesterly side of, and not adjacent to U.S. Route Fifty, and is a lease parcel on the landfill, known as landfill borrow pit, solar panel lease area. If you want to take them one at a time, that would be the, oops, well, the second piece is the first resolution, I'm sorry, is...
First one's the Delmar Convenience Center.
First one, yeah. They reversed it in public advertising. So the second parcel is the Delmar Convenience Center on Waller Road, and that is the subject of one forty-one dash two, twenty-fourteen for public hearing.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution one forty-one dash two thousand and fourteen?
Show motion.
Second.
Okay, and this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments on this specific...
This is on Waller Road, correct?
This is the Waller Road, yes, the Delmar Convenience Center location. No? Okay. Yes, go ahead. Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Jason Lor, live at ninety-three fifty-eight Calvary Circle, which is a subdivision across the street from this location. First of all, I want to applaud the county for looking into this. Financially, it's a no-brainer, in my opinion. I've dealt with these projects before, I just have two comments I have spoken to Mr. Beecham about. One, I think the biggest concern of most of the residents out there that I know is just the aesthetics, is the aesthetics. Of all the solar projects I've dealt with in the past, it's never been near a residential area. So I've asked Mr. Beecham to please, if this moves forward, to please make sure that there's significant aesthetics, a landscape buffer, which he mentioned, a tall enough landscape buffer that it would shield it from the neighbors across the street and as people drive down the road. The second one, that was a question I asked him, is if the county looked into the land owned further back, behind the borrow pond, I guess it is. I understand it's a formerly or currently contaminated site, so not much can be done in it, under it, but I figure that it could be possibly done on top of it. There's ways to mount these solar panels that is very, in, very, not very evasive to the ground. I understand it would be a longer power line to the road, but in the grand scheme of things, I don't think it would be that much of a cost difference. But again, I, I do applaud the county for doing this, I think it's a no-brainer financially, I just would hope they look into a little more of the aesthetics and how it's going to affect the immediate local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Council comments?
Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Go ahead.
Just one thing.
Brandon, if you would, introduce yourself for the camera.
Sorry. Brandon Fletcher, I live at ninety-one ninety-one Hickory Mall Road, which is about a quarter mile down the road from the site. Firstly, I've grown up in the area, behind the landfill, there is a gravel pit that I frequent, and I know there's actually bald eagles that live back there. So I mean, in that thought, and then, you know, I'm just considering other wildlife, how it's going to affect, you know, things like that. I know concerns as far as radiation from the electrician, electricity, has been a concern, or that's been brought up. And then I guess a question of mine is, you know, if it goes through, the county's allowed to do it, am I allowed to put them on my farm? You know, I mean, I haven't looked into it or not, but I could definitely make more money off my farm that way.
Sure.
So, you know, I just don't see, you know, if, maybe I can. I haven't educated myself on it yet, but if I can't, why should the county be allowed to? So, I guess, that's about it.
Thanks. Any other public comments on this one? Okay, council comments?
Ma'am?
Anyone?
I'll start, I don't mind. I, first, I want to appreciate, say thank you, Mr. Beecham, for having the meeting out there last night with the residents, and before the meeting started, I took a ride through the residential neighborhood, which is across the street. They're very nice homes, they're very well-maintained, and I think it would be a mistake for the county to put this at their front doors, even if it is buffered, because one of the things that I found interesting in this lease is that solar, let's see, at their, I guess I'm going to say discretion, can remove any, let's see, may take approved actions to prevent other buildings, structures, or flora on the premises from overshadowing or otherwise blocking access of sunlight, you know, to the system. And I know last night, Mr. Beecham was talking about a ten-foot fence, then a six-foot fence. Now tonight, he says it's going to be an eight-foot fence. He was talking about Leland's cypresses last night, you know, the Leland's cypresses on the properties I have are two stories tall, which definitely would block, you know, the sunlight from the solar panels. And I don't see how this could be properly, I'm going to say buffered... that solar, let's see, at their, I guess I'm going to say discretion, can remove any, let's see, may take approved actions to prevent other buildings, structures, or floor on the premises from overshadowing or otherwise blocking access of sunlight, you know, to the system. And I know last night, Mr. Beecham was talking about a 10-foot fence, then a 6-foot fence. Now tonight, he says it's going to be an 8-foot fence. He was talking about Leland Cypress's last night. You know, the Leland Cypress's on the properties I have are two stories tall, which definitely would block, you know, the sunlight from the solar panels. And I don't see how this could be properly, I'm going to say buffered landscape, so the residents don't have to look at this. So I think there would be a better location than right across from the street from that very nice neighborhood.
I guess, first question I would have, would there be an effect to the property values? Had that been discussed, or was that discussed last night at the meeting?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Lee Beecham, Public Works Director for Wycombe County. And that certainly was discussed at the meeting last night. Also, just talking with Gail's comment, I apologize, I was not looking at any documentation, so I misspoke on the fence, but it is going to be an 8-foot tall fence. And that has been discussed with Solar City, and that's going to be the final height of the fence. Also, as you were talking about the neighborhood, there's actually a resident in the neighborhood that has a Solar City system on their home in the neighborhood. So I thought that was very interesting. And he was actually out there last night and spoke very highly of Solar City and was really enjoyed working with them. So, Shereet, to get back to your question, there has been some research done on property values. And at this point, there's not been any negative impact on property values. I have discussed this with Spree Van Ness. Ben Alder has done several of these solar farm projects. And to his knowledge, there's not been any negative impact to property values. If anything, they're seeing an increase, especially on home installations, because you're actually reducing your operating costs through the solar panels. So some people see that as a positive when looking at the property values of a particular home. Also, if you don't mind, I would like to show just a real quick... Yeah, yeah. Just a real quick PowerPoint of some pictures of a site that has recently been done by Solar City. And let me get back to the first slide here. So this is the site in Queen Anne's County. This site has been in place for, what, about two years now? And these are basically how the panels would look out on the site. So you can see those panels, I think at the very back of the panel, they're about five foot, five foot tall. This site is very similar to what you're going to see out on Waller Road. And what you're seeing here is you're actually on the inside of the fenced-in area where the panels are. And you can see, it's hard to see, let me see if I've got another picture, but there's actually corn. You can see there's a row of corn there. And there's the fence that they selected for this project. And you can see the screening that's happening there from the, there are a couple rows of corn. Here's another shot of it. And actually, what I'm going to show you next in this picture, that's actually looking back onto the solar field of a row of evergreens that were planted at the same time that the field was installed. And this field's been in place for about two years. And you can see how that is shaded and actually really protected that site. And right across the street is a home that, again, you don't even know that there's a solar farm there. So I think this is a really good example. And again, I'd be more than happy to take any council members or any members of the public that want to go up and check out this site up in Queen Anne's County. And this is a great example of what you're going to see there. Perfect example. This is a very similar situation to Waller Road, where you do have homes right up against the edge of the roadway. Over to the left is where the solar farm is. And you can't see anything because of the landscaping that's been installed there, so...
I see a home. Is that, is there a development there, or is it just a home?
I believe, Brandon, there's a few homes in the...
There's four or five homes.
Yeah, there's four or five homes around it. It's around a turn. There's actually another home, I believe, past where that van is, where that van is. And there's actually one back, you know, into the picture.
Lee, I heard you explain to the people last night that putting this farm, solar field across the road from them would increase their property values. Do you have any documentation on that?
Sure. I've got a couple documents that I can certainly forward to the council members for review if they have interest in that.
That says that it will increase their property values?
It says there's no been neg... There's not been any negative...
You told them last night it was going to increase their property?
No, I believe you're wrong with the...
No.
I believe I said it...
You are wrong.
No, I'm not. I was standing there and heard him say it.
No, I was standing there too. He said the ones that are mounted on the houses increase the property value.
Before he said that, man...
And he said there was no negative.
Before he said that, he said it's been known to increase property values. I heard him say it. Yes, I did.
On homes that have...
I heard you say that too.
Systems.
I heard you say that too. Because somebody corrected you, and you said that, so...
Are you talking about having the trees that far back on Waller Road and still have a good 30 or 40 feet before you start the tree line, before you start the fence line?
We're going to start, we're going to start the tree line outside of the clear zone of the road, which in that situation, I believe is 15 or 20 feet. What I say, when I say clear zone, in road safety, there's an area that we need to have clear from the edge of the roadway back, so that if a deer runs out in front of you or, you know, that there's a clear zone, if your car does run off the road, that you've got an area that's clear. And we're going to try to keep that 15-foot to 20-foot clear zone, depending on, again, depending on where the fence line's going to be installed.
Well, I, for one, would love to go see it. You know, I'm a good, glad driver.
Great. I'd be happy to take it.
Before I approve something that's going to affect somebody's neighborhood, or, you know, I would like to see it. So that's good. In the meantime...
Lee, where is the, where is the money coming from for the hookup? I know that you said before that we had to pay for the hookup. Isn't that correct?
I said we have to pay for the attorney that we hired to help us facilitate this contract.
As far as hooking it up to DPNL, who pays for that?
That, all that cost is paid for by Solar City.
Solar City, okay. All right, okay.
Lee, both gentlemen who spoke tonight during the public comments, the concern that they had was, you know, the, if there was going to be a tall landscape buffer, which what I'm hearing from you, yes, there is. Is that correct?
There's going to be a landscaping buffer. And you can see in this situation, you're looking at around, probably a 12-foot high. I would say there's Leland Cypress or down at the telephone line there on the pole, in the middle of the pole. So that's around a 12-foot tall buffer.
Okay. The other concern was the wildlife. Is there documentation that there is wildlife there?
That site is currently a grass field. And I can imagine that any wildlife that's there is, you know, indigenous to the area. And I don't think there's any endangered species or anything like that. But there has not been any testing of that done. That certainly is something that Solar City does an environmental investigation, and they do certainly look at any issues like that.
And is that in the contract that they will look at the issues?
They look at environmental issues in the contract, yeah.
Now, the other thing that I heard tonight was that there is some land owned further back behind this piece of land. That sounded like that it was a worthless piece of land because it was contaminated. Is there anything that we can move it back? Would that be feasible, or...
So there's, there's some challenges there. That site was a tire dump for a number of years. And the state came in probably about 20 years ago and cleaned that up. There is a lot of material there still that is not native material. And there's also large piles of stone that was left from when they actually, they stabilized it to bring in the machines to do the, to remove the tires. So there would be a lot of site prep that would be involved. And there have been a lot of trees that have grown up. And as Brandon talked about, you know, there is some habitat in the back because there are some ponds in the area. And we felt that this was the best location for it because it is currently a field that is maintained by the county. It's not being used for any purpose to generate revenue or to offset any costs that the county has. It really is just a field that we have to go out and cut and maintain every several months. So there's really a cost to this property. Under this project, Solar City would install the project, and they also maintain the site. So there would be any landscaping or any maintenance needs of the, cutting the grass would all be covered under this project by Solar City.
As well as to landscape the trees that you're referring to as well?
As well as the trees, yeah.
Once they get to a point that...
Yes. And just to add one more thing, Stevie, is we felt for security reasons that it was better to have the project where it is landscaped and protected with a fence, rather than have it in the back where it can't be, is easily maintained by not only the sheriff's office, but other residents that might see activity going on. The way we have it set up, our Delmar Convenience Center is back past the pond that we talked about. And if there is any issues back there, it's very difficult to regulate because we have a fence that prevents people from going back there. But again, four-wheelers, dirt bikes, things like that, you know, people can take those back there. And we felt that it was more appropriate to have this a little more accessible to law enforcement.
Thank you.
The, I was going to say, the picture that you have up there, it looked like the one that you showed previously, the solar panels were set further back off the road than what would be possible at the Delmar site. Looks like there was a road that went back, see right there, off the main road. So it looks like they're set considerably further back from the main road. Or is that the main road right there?
No, that, they, these panels are in front of a cornfield. And, Brandon, if I'm not mistaken, I believe there was some property owner issues there that they couldn't put the panels directly up against the...
Well, so this is actually a spray field in the town of Centerville. So there's large spraying devices, and they farm the land as well. Typically, the corn, I've never seen the corn, actually. When I drove out recently to take some new pictures, I had trouble finding it. I was like, where did it go? But it was sandwiched between cornrows. It was really sited in that location based on where these pumps and sprays are doing the fields, and it just made more sense for Centerville to have it located there because it gave more area that they could spray, I guess, and grow their crops. But I think that realistically, you're not going to see it if it's right on the tree line behind it. Like, I mean, I couldn't see any panels from the road whatsoever. But of course, the corn's in the way, but prior to the corn, you know, you don't even see the corn through the trees, really. So I think if the planting is done properly, aesthetics are done properly, you know, you can make it so nothing is ever seen there outside of a nice, of a nice tree line.
So there's a tree line, then corn, then the panels?
Right. But I would say probably, I mean, six months out of the year, seven months out of the year, the corn isn't there.
Next, the Delmar site is not terribly deep. It's long, but it's not terribly deep.
That's correct. But I think this is a great example of what, you can't even see the corn itself through those trees. And this is only a two-year-old stand of trees in this picture. So we're going to have a really great aesthetic barrier there to keep anybody from really getting a good look at the panels.
Can we back up to the other picture, please? I'm confused kind of here. Power line is on the corn roadside, right?
Yeah, I think that's a back access.
That, yeah, that's the, that's the access road to get to the panels. I don't...
Where the power lines are is the road, I believe, that you're seeing in the other picture. And I think from that...
Power lines are on this side of the trees.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so you can see the power lines there.
I think what you're seeing in the other picture is an access road into that, into that spray field.
So how many hundred feet, how many hundred feet off the road are these panels? Do you got a cornfield between the trees and the panels?
I think these panels are probably 150 yards, maybe, off the, off the road.
But you're saying these trees are in front of the corn?
Yes.
Yes.
But look at the poles here. See the poles?
Well, you're seeing the top of the poles, so...
I'm seeing the whole pole. I can see the second pole all the way down. So these poles are in front of trees also.
Well, you're looking down that second pole. I don't see the bottom of that second pole, so I would assume that the, and when you're looking at this, the, those, Leland Cypress are following that power line to a point until you get past where the panels are. In our application, we're going to have those trees wrapping around the side so that you can't see it as you approach the site or when you're directly in front of the site.
And Mr. Irving's statement about solar costing a lot more, and he said that federal subsidies took care of wind power, and that's why wind power was so expensive, so, or wind power was so popular now. Is that why solar power is so popular now that federal subsidies are taking care of it?
Well, they actually both qualify for the same federal subsidy at about the same value. The fact is, wind is quite a bit more expensive typically on the front end. But it's basically the same amount.
So if the federal subsidies dry up in two or three years?
Again, this project's locked in. So Solar City has agreed to perform for 20 years with this project. And the way they do that is by getting the front-end subsidies, and then they've also got the power generation locked in for 20 years. So that's how they're able to make the financial model work.
But if the federal subsidies end...
Yeah, so the federal subsidies are the form of a federal tax credit. So about 30% of the value of the system comes in the form of federal tax credit, which in part, when we build these funds with organizations, you know, they're interested in these federal tax credits, honestly. And Solar City's goal to be able to develop these types of arrays without any subsidies whatsoever. And I think that we're probably two or three years away from that. We've seen the price of power, as you saw, 30 cents in the wind model, you know, that was probably pre-subsidies. Post subsidies, you see where we are today at 4.5 cents. Right now, in some Caribbean islands, where they're generating all their power from oil and fuel, we're selling power at the lowest 15 cents. So we do think in the next three to four years, as the subsidies completely disappear, we're able to sell power at better than, let's say, grid rate without any subsidies at all, which is sort of, I think, the goal of the entire subsidy plan.
Mr. Fletcher had another?
My question was just, what cost, if any, is there to the county on this project?
Sure.
Sure. That's a great question. Currently, the only cost that the county's incurred has been to have the assistance of an attorney that has, specializes in these types of projects. Attorneys with Funk and Bolton, which we've used before on other projects. And also, we've incurred the cost to do the land surveying for the site leases, so. And those are the only costs that will be incurred by the project.
What's the total cost on that, Lee?
Sure.
And will there still be more cost involved?
Sure. We're through the negotiation part of the contract. I believe, you know, once, if the council chooses to approve the project, we'll probably have our attorney work on the last, just few nuances as far as making sure that what was approved is what we had negotiated. And that shouldn't be more than a few hours of work. So up to this point, we've spent, I believe, around $10,000 on legal services and then around $4,000 on surveying services. So we had, if this helps, the proposal was for around $15,000 for legal services, and we've been able to do it for around $10,000. So we've been able to be very frugal with legal services.
Throughout that process and the initial thought of doing this project in that area, and I know you mentioned that the other area would be more costly and prep would, time would, or preparation to get that land in order would be a little bit more difficult. But what, did you have a true estimate on the cost of that, though?
On the cost of the land prep? Sure. We did start to investigate that, and I'll be honest, we looked at probably, what did we start out, probably 20 sites, I think we looked at. And we've narrowed them down to these two for the initial, the initial sites. And if this is a viable project, and we're really doing well with this project, we might look to expand that in the future. But these were the, these were the easiest sites that were the most, most valued for our, for our efforts in doing this project, was this site, and then the one we're going to talk about, which is the landfill borrow pit site. So these sites are both cleared sites, ready to go. They're basically, again, they were a cost to the county now, where we go out and we cut the grass every couple weeks. So there was definitely a savings there, not only with manpower, but also equipment savings. So we felt that these were the best choices for the, for this project.
Sure, I get that. I guess what I was saying, was there a true cost, or did you have that paperwork to say what it costs for the land down the road that the gentleman during the public hearing was referencing?
Sure. We, the way this project works is that Solar City packages all the prep of the land into their, into their price. So if we wanted to look at a site that was not cleared, that was not ready to go, there would certainly be cost incurred either by Solar City, which would be pushed through to our cost per kilowatt hour that we're paying, or we would have to do that on the front end. And I can tell you, since this project started, we've got three other entities, the city of Salisbury, the board of education, and now Werwood Community College is interested in doing a project off of our, piggybacking off our contract. And the Werwood Community College has some area that has trees, and they were looking at, well, is that an option to do solar? And the cost to, to remove those trees could be a challenge to giving them the same price that we're able to get on this project. So it really does factor into it. It also factors in the distance we have to go to get to the power lines. And when we put out our initial RFP, we looked at all these, these initial sites, and we came down to these two, three sites, and then now we've narrowed it down to basically these two sites that are going to be the most cost-effective.
Lee, I'm looking at two purchase orders here, one for 10,000 and one for 15,000 for legal services, so.
So what, what you're looking at is, we ran across fiscal years. So we had initial contract, we had, I believe, what would you say, $15,000?
You just said it was 10,000 legal costs. I'm, I'm saying there's one 10,000 PO and then there's another 5,000.
Sure, sure. And that, that's what the PO is. And, and again, we have only spent around $10,000 out of both those POs combined. So what you're seeing is, one, one PO is for last fiscal year. We had to close that PO out, open up a new PO for this fiscal year, and that's where you're seeing that reduction in the dollar amount, so.
One says 5,000 in total and the other's 10,000, so that's 15. I don't, you, you're saying we didn't pay 15?
We, we have not spent $15,000. We have $15,000 on the PO for legal services, but we have not spent that much in legal services. So, and again, that's why there's two POs, is because one is from one fiscal year, one is from the next.
Lee, if you're finished there, I wasn't aware of, and, and maybe I overlooked something, but I wasn't aware of the meeting you had last night.
Okay, apologize.
So I guess my question is going to surround that meeting, about how many citizens came out, what types of objections did you hear, if you heard any, what types of concerns?
Sure. I don't have the...
I'm sorry I wasn't there.
Oh, no, no problem. I apologize if I, I missed, missed getting that information, I apologize. I think, Melissa, the, the list that we had of residents was around 15 to 20 residents, I believe.
Yes.
I don't have the, the list in front of me. But we heard similar concerns. Property values was a concern that we discussed. Cost to the county was a concern that we, we discussed, and there were some concerns about residents that used the, the borrow pit there to fish. And we talked about that and the fact that that is no trespassing on that site, and they shouldn't be out there fishing to begin with, but we, we talked about that. So those were kind of the three big concerns. Also, the landscaping buffer and being able to see the site. And I think we're, we've really addressed that, and, and you can see through some of these slides how Solar City's done that in other sites and been very successful with it.
And, and the citizens that were there knew we were having a public hearing tonight?
They, they did, they did. We, we said that at the beginning of the meeting at the end. And they also, we posted the site with a public notice signage, and I think that went up a week and a half ago, maybe. So, and then we had a, a drawing of what the site was going to look like on, on the board there. We did have people that were negative in the beginning, or felt it wasn't a good project, and then by the end, they actually came up to us. I think Joe, somebody came up to you and said, you know, it's a good, they were, they were excited about the project, they weren't in the beginning, so, you know, there's, again, there's, there's a couple...
I don't remember talking to that person, but anyway. I went into the neighborhood and I, I didn't hear, I heard some people didn't care, and I heard some people that were concerned.
Okay.
And we did have a few people at the meeting who were, were in favor of it.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like due diligence was done on this, and right now, council is doing its due diligence with our public hearing, and we've had the public speak, and I think council needs to listen to everybody's comments, and if we're done with that, we need to move this forward, one way or another.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions before we vote on this?
Well, I have one more, one more thing to say. We're talking about using the money out of the landfill to pay for the legal fees. It seems like we're always looking to the landfill. I know we looked to the landfill previously for moving sprawl sites. We also looked to it at one time about the connector road. And by using money out of the landfill, it seems to be our cash cow to do the legal fees. I'm just concerned about next budget session, how it's going to work out about coming to the council and needing more, needing, raising fees for transfer, dump stickers or, or whatever, so. I think that that money should be split up to the, to the departments that benefit from, from this project, if the project moves forward.
Just to answer that question, solid waste is one of the larger users of electricity within the, within the county. So we felt that it was, it was appropriate to have solid waste be the lead entity on it. And then as we get into this project, if, as, as Joe mentioned, we wanted to look at trying to pull some of those funds back from the other departments that benefit from this, I think we could certainly do that if, if that's the council's wishes.
Let's do it.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll do a roll call, vote on this. We've had a motion and a second. So Ms. Barkovich?
You always start with me.
Start this one?
That's okay, I can do that. No, my vote is going to be no. I, I really do think, I wouldn't want this across the street from me. You can buffer it all you want, but, and I think it's, it's not a good location. I think we need to look for a different location.
Sheree?
I'm a little mixed on this one. I say that because I am concerned about the residents and the community, but what I did hear was that their concern is, or that they were okay with the fact that the landscaping was going to be in place. All I could think when we're doing this presentation is 20 years, I'm concerned about people for 20 years. But not hearing anything negative besides that, I'll vote in favor of it.
Okay. Joe?
Well, like I said, I made a trip through the neighborhood last night. In fact, Gail, we met out there, talked to one fellow, and he wasn't too happy about it being there, even though he had solar panels on his roof. And that was a different fellow than you talked to.
Okay.
So anyway. But, you know, through this whole process, you know, we've been getting so many conflicting stories, you know, I'll go back to Gail's six-foot, 10-foot, and eight-foot fence. Last meeting, we were talking about $111,000 a year, and it went to $300,000 a year. So I guess on the next one, I'm going to vote, the next project at the landfill, I'm probably going to support that. But this one, I'm not going to support because the folks that are in favor of it, I think everybody feels that green energy is good. I know I do, you know, and I'm certainly in favor of green energy. But they've not lived with this thing being in front of their development yet for five years or 10 years. And my concerns are, where is, where is Solar City going to be in five or 10 years? Evergreen Energy, who put the system in at the college, has already filed for bankruptcy. I don't know what their situation's going to be down there, who's going to furnish their warranty, you know? But my main concern is the residents out there. They've not, they've not had this project in front of them yet. And when you drive down that street, you drive right up to it. So I'm going to vote no on it, so.
Okay. Bob?
No.
Okay. Stevie?
Well, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I do believe that you have done your due diligence. I believe council has too, and I believe some of the concerns that I've heard here tonight are valid concerns, both for and against. But I, Lee, I believe that you have addressed these concerns. I am going to support this project. I think it's a very good thing for the county. So yes, I vote yes.
Okay. Joe?
Thank goodness for technology. We, you know, we, we keep saying that we shouldn't do untested technology, and here's an opportunity to take advantage of it in the county, and we certainly are fortunate that the savings will be passed on or utilized in, in a prudent manner. And I thank the people that came in and spoke at the public hearing, and that's what it's for, and that's why we do it, so they can come in here, they can express themselves to us, and we can hear it on a one-to-one basis. But you certainly have answered all the questions that I have seen that have come before us, and I'm going to be in favor of this.
Okay. And I'm in favor of the project as well. I think, looking at the history of the site prior to this, prior to being a field and landfill, it was a tire dump, and before that, it was a, a pit that raw sewage was dumped in for years that the state allowed us to do. So I think this is a vast improvement of the use of that land. I think we're going to do our best effort to make it look appealing, and I, I'd be in favor of it if it was directly across from my house. I only live about a half mile away, and I come down that road every day, and I look forward to seeing it. So, thank you. Okay, next, we have a public hearing on resolution 142. You already introduced this, do you want to do it again?
Well, you introduced just one. It's the same public hearing, just on a different parcel, so.
Okay.
142 is for the parcel located at the landfill borrow pit.
Okay. Can I have a motion introduce resolution 142-2014?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. This is a public hearing, if anybody has any comments on this particular resolution? Council comments on this one?
I guess I just want to make sure we're going to have enough gravel in, in the borrow pit to cover for the next 20 years. You feel we have got that, right?
Sure, yes. We've got around 27 to 28 years of capacity left in the borrow pit. This section that we're looking at is at the very extreme end of the borrow pit, and we've got several sections before this that we will utilize, utilize material out of. Also, we do try to take advantage anytime we can of material that's brought in by users of the landfill. We do get a lot of calls from contractors in the area that maybe don't want to have to haul their material back to their yard or whatever, whatever their situation might be. And we do try to take that material and use that where we can. So again, it's a, it is a luxury that, that we have and not many landfills have to have such a vast resource of, of borrow material there. So we are, we're in very good shape.
Okay. I have no questions. Any other comments or questions?
I just do have one. The, the borrow pit one has a, quite a lot of vegetation trees around it. Are all those going to stay?
Yes, right, the, all the trees are going to stay. Let me grab my laser. So all the, all the trees on the south side of the, of the borrow pit, so, so this is, this section will be one of the sections that we will actually start to mine in the borrow pit. So we're working on our forest conservation plan and our remediation plan. So these trees are going to be removed to begin with through that, through that plan of mining the, the landfill. So that's the south end where we have the majority of the exposure, and you can see these panels are actually oriented so that the, the face of the panel, the side that collects the electricity will actually be facing this, this corner here. So we will probably be removing these trees at some point in the future. I doubt it will happen in conjunction with this project. You can see what they've done is they've actually set back the front edge of these panels so that they're not in the, the shade line of, of those trees. So we, we should be in pretty good shape. This is one of those sites that, that we had talked about maybe doing a, a second phase of it at some point in the future, if this is, if this is a worthwhile endeavor. This parcel right here is, is actually owned by the county as well and has frontage onto Stanton Avenue. And this might be a great opportunity in the, in the future for the county to really show off to people that are using Route 50, going to Ocean City or wherever they might be going, that, that Wycomico County's solar-powered. So I, I think that might be a good opportunity in the future. The challenge with that site is, is that's not in our forest conservation plan, and that's why that site has not been selected now, because there is some growth that has, has grown up there, and, and we would want to put that in our forest conservation model should we, should we move forward with that site.
Aren't there homes also there on Stanton Avenue?
Yes, there are, there are homes. There's actually several homes right in this area. There's also a home, home here. So that, that was the other, this is a, a very nice buffer screen that's there already, as well as this, this screen here is very well-defined. So we felt that, again, having a second phase or having an expansion option was really something we wanted to look at. This, this site, as it's seen, as it's shown now, basically maxes out what we're allowed to install based on the Public Service Commission's requirements. If we go above this size site, this is around a two-megawatt facility, we have to do some additional, we have to go through some additional regulations, which we didn't feel that it was worth, worthwhile at this point.
How is the, how are they going to access that site for the construction? Where are they going to come in?
Sure. So we've got several access points. Again, the county does currently own this property, and there is, there is an access culvert that we could, we could make a temporary access to get through this site. We also currently have an access here that is where we access to, to maintain the field, and we have an additional right-of-way with this property owner. However, we do feel we'll probably go through one of these options, whether it be through the existing borrow pit or putting in an access road off Stanton Avenue.
And there are no homes that actually face this site? Looks like they, most of them back up to the rear of the house would be facing the site.
Yes, so this, it's hard to see in this image, but this is a rather large row of trees. You can see by where that shade line is on that tree, I mean, it's actually almost covering that house, and that house is probably almost 100 foot off the, the base of that tree. So all those, all those homes are very well shaded from it. There's only a slight access point right here that there's a culvert that we use through this, through this property owner's right-of-way. And, and, but the majority of it is all very well established with, with a tree buffer.
And the same thing again, an eight-foot fence?
Yes, there will be an eight-foot fence.
Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, I've got a comment. I want to, I have a question for Mr. Baker concerning the gentleman that got up to the podium. A few years ago, we passed some zoning ordinances about windmills for the county. Did we ever pass any zoning ordinances about solar?
Not to my recollection, no.
So if you, if you want a solar field, you need to hurry up before we have long...
No, that's, that's solar on the house. You know, solar in the field, I think would depend on what size it is. I don't think we have any regulations on that.
I don't think the county does, the, the state does allow solar in ag zones, and even a land that has an easement acquired through the MOUTH program or something is allowed to have up to a 2%, I believe, in pervious surface, and you are allowed, it was just actually passed this year, five acres or 5%?
Five acres.
Yeah, five acres or 5% of the total area can be a solar field. So it is, it is allowed even on, on lands with easements on them.
This site's around, I think it's around 13 acres is what this site is. And again, that's at two and a half megawatts, or two megawatts, excuse me. The whole project is around two and a half megawatts, which is around 37% of the county's energy needs. So it is taking over a pretty large portion of the county energy demands.
Brandon?
Brandon.
Brandon, yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions about this? Nope, okay. Do we need to do roll call, vote on this one as well? Okay. So we've had a motion and a second. Gail?
Just do yours, Tom.
Yes, start the other end, Tom. Thank you so much, thanks, Sheree.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Stevie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sheree?
Yes.
And I will vote yes on this one. I, I like the idea that this is well shielded and, you know, nobody actually has to look at it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you guys.
Mr. President, I, I need to make a correction. Back on resolution 140-2015, Mr. Calvert needs to change his vote to aye. He did not mean to vote no.
Okay, yeah.
So we need to, just for record's sake, if I can clarify that.
Which vote was that?
What was that?
That was on the Moore's mill.
That was amended to capital improvement.
It was on the Moore's mill.
Yeah. I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thanks.
140-15, right?
140-15, yep.
So it should be that.
Yes.
Okay. Next public hearing?
Next public hearing is on legislative bill 2014-09. It was introduced on September the 16th. It's an act to empower and authorize Wycomico County to borrow on full faith and credit, $16,525,000. This is your general obligation, bond bill, to finance the cost of certain projects for the Board of Ed, Roads Department, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, State's Attorney's Office, Recreation Parks Tourism, and the Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center. The bill, the specific projects are identified on page two and three. This is the second stop, step in the process, and the final step would be the adoption The bill, the specific projects are identified on Page 2 and 3. This is the second stop, step in the process and the final step would be the adoption of the bond resolution at a later date.
Okay. Can I have a, let's see, has this been?
This has already been introduced, so this is a public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing, if anybody has any comments on the Legislative Bill 2014-09, the bond bill? Okay. Counsel comments on this?
Certainly, many of you may have heard throughout the years that West Salisbury Elementary School is one of the schools that I want to see replaced in my tenure or at least be a part of it at some point. So I am pleased to see it in here. I know this is the second step and we have the final step to go, but I'm certainly in favor of this.
Great. Okay, any other comments?
Well, I would, I see a lot of things on here that really need to be done. You know, we have to pay for the State's Attorney's Office and we have to finish paying for Bennett Middle. There's some things, I'd like to see the county reduce its debt more and so I'm not going to be able to support this. I see some things on here that I think we could wait on, so.
Okay. Any other comments at this time?
Well, I guess I can echo Mr. Holloway's. There's just, I mean, most of it I'm fine with, there's just a few items like the civic center upgrade that I'm just not ready to go with at this time.
Okay.
So, I mean, if there's a way of backing one item or another item out, then I'm great with it, but as far as approving the whole thing, no, I can't go with the whole thing.
Is there any other?
Mr. Baker, could you explain the next step to the council?
The next step is to choose what items out of this that you actually are going to borrow.
Thank you. So there is a time that you can choose items out of this.
Let's do it right now.
That would be, that would be the bond resolution.
That's correct.
The bond resolution is typically the time when you make your final decision what you're going to borrow money for that year and what you're not going to borrow money for. And that's, I think that's what I hear Mr. Joe Holloway and Mr. Bob Culver saying they would like to do.
That's right.
When is that coming before council, approximately? Will it be before this council?
Yeah, it'll be before this council. I'm not sure if it's the next meeting or the one after. When's the bond resolution scheduled, according to the financing schedule?
18th November.
18th of November.
So at that point, that's when it would be appropriate to eliminate some of these, because I do have a concern with a couple of them also. But at this point, you know, I'm going to support this, move this forward until it comes back to us.
You said the 18th of November, is that what you said? Yes. So we're not going to have opportunity to go?
That's when we, they go to the bond market, but the resolution's done before that.
That's when you pass a resolution to say what projects you're planning to fund from the next bond issue.
And when can we anticipate that being on our agenda?
In other words, when this legislation is passed.
Wait, it is on November 18th?
No, that's when you're going to do the bond resolution.
That's the day that the resolution is coming.
So it's not this council?
Okay, well, it's two things that are being asked. We were thinking, trip to the bond market versus the day that it was, okay. We're on the same page now, right?
The resolution is coming before November 18th.
On the 18th, okay, all right.
It'll still be you, it'll still be this council.
Yeah, we'll all still be here.
Okay, okay.
And I think that's a good thing, because I don't think we ought to leave this for a new council to do.
Okay.
We can wait till then, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So this has been introduced, so we'll do a, it's a legislative bill, so we'll do a roll call vote again.
Start with.
John?
He's been too quiet tonight.
I thought I was the vice president. I thought the vice president goes next to the president. Why don't you vote first?
I'll vote in favor of this.
Okay. Stevie?
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
Yes.
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 We've got another time to go.
Okay. Sheree?
Yes.
Okay. Gail?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, one last public hearing?
One last public hearing. This is for Legislative, excuse me, Legislative Bill 2014-10. It was also introduced on September the 16th, 2014. This also is an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County to borrow on full faith and credit in aggregate amount not exceeding $2 million. It's done in the same form as your general obligation bond. It will be a general obligation bond, but it will not be for sale through the bond market process. This is the documentation needed to be able to give a bond for the USDA loan.
Okay. And this has been introduced as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So this is a public hearing. If anybody has any comments on this? We ran out of public almost. All right, any counsel?
Could I just say that?
Any counsel comments on this one? No? Okay. And this is a legislative bill, so we will again do a roll call vote.
Start with me now.
Okay. John?
Aye.
Okay. Stevie?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sheree?
Yes.
And Gail?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And that's all the public hearings I have.
Thank you.